Who do we have from the board online?
Right now it's Tim and then Rich Mengi. I believe he was also here.
Yeah, way too close.
And then Eric had said he was going to be here and I don't know.
Oh, in person?
No.
Oh, on, okay. Okay, so let's open the meeting we have a quorum as soon as I appoint Rich, right?
Yes.
Rich, you are appointed for, is for somebody because the people are here, how does that work?
It has to be for somebody, not the select board member.
Yep, so you'd have to be either Tim or Eric. And Eric is coming.
Is Eric on?
Eric is just coming on now.
Just coming on. I don't know, does it matter? It doesn't matter, we're just having discussions tonight, right?
Physically present.
Yeah, okay, so Tim, Eric, who do you want to be, who wants to be unappointed for the night?
And you need to unmute yourself.
Oh, I don't care.
Okay, Eric, you're sitting for Eric, Eric does not care.
Okay.
Okay, so we're obviously picking up on the solar issues. And I guess, you know, it's unfortunate on the one hand that we couldn't get a quorum that night. On the other hand, it might be a silver lining and we can get the whole thing in one package, which I think will be much clearer, and in any case, we don't have a choice. So, there's a couple of things that occurred to me. One was, I read Rich Mengi's email and I thought, in general, that was an interesting approach, to do it by size. And then the other issue is, we talked about doing a questionnaire, and that's probably something we should take up tonight. But to start, why doesn't everybody who has something to say, say it, and why don't we start with the people online, the board members online, because they always get left to the end. So Eric, do you have anything you wanted to say?
Well, solar?
You got it.
Not specifically, I was hoping we could get it done quicker so we don't get caught up in deadline pressure like we did this year. Hopefully that won't be a problem.
Amen. Yeah, so let's do that. What about, Tim, did you have anything to say?
Unmute yourself, Tim.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Can hear you now.
Okay, well, I was just wondering if we wanted to do it overall and maybe decide what we want to regulate. I mean, it sounds like we don't want to regulate rose mounted at all. We may or may not want to regulate in the historic districts. It sounds like we really, as far as panels for homeowner, you know, homeowners, it's really only what applies to an accessory building. So maybe we're just going to be regulating larger, whatever we decide is a larger thing.
Okay.
Does that sound, I mean, it might be easier to approach it that way.
Okay.
I just want to make introductions, David Kahn.
Nice to meet you.
Rich Brown, Chuck Stadler, Vicki Smith. And then we have Mark Bolinter and John Biglow, right?
Yep.
Make sure, quick to see behind the mask. So I think we are. And David is going to take over for Ben.
Thank you for your willingness to step in.
Representative.
Much appreciated.
I didn't know about taking over for Ben, but I'll at least come.
Welcome to the march. Okay, and then we, Rich Mengi.
Hi. Yeah, I mean, I guess I, just kind of in preparation for this meeting, I kind of went back and looked at some of the information that I had on my computer from back in May. And it does seem like some of the information that I have on my computer, I'm not sure where it came from, but it's some other community zoning ordinances, including plain fields, Lebanon.
And Hollis, I think Hollis is.
And Hollis, yeah, so I guess we must have gotten those from this, you know, discussed those. And now that we've had that, this public hearing, I think there's some, I think it, maybe it would be interesting to, you know, either individually or collectively, go back and look at some of these ordinances and maybe, I don't know, does the Upper Valley Lake Sunapee Regional Planning Commission have any ability to help us out? But it, I feel like we got some really good input in our last meeting and I also feel like going back and looking at some of the notes, they all seem to be, there seem to be a lot of parts there that are very germane, I think, to where we're kind of heading. And so I don't know how we can put all that stuff together, but I do feel like it would be interesting to, are we allowed as board members to work with one other board member or?
Yes, and David, correct me if I'm wrong, David Robbins, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we can have a subcommittee.
Yep.
Does a subcommittee meeting have to be public?
I believe it does.
Okay, so, yeah, but you'd have to figure, we'd have to figure out how to have that public. I know when we were working on the workforce housing stuff and then we were working on the septic information, we met here. I know with the workforce housing, it was open to, it was announced and open to the public. I think with the septic thing, not too many people were interested. So I don't know, how would that, how would that work under the present weird circumstances?
It would probably have to be a meeting here, try to keep it in this room, keep the social distancing masks.
And is it two weeks' notice?
No, we can do a week's notice.
A week's notice? So, Rich Mengi.
So in any event, I'm just thinking that it would be kind of interesting to review some of the ordinances that we've looked at and I do agree, I think we're really trying to figure out, is there a size threshold that we want to meet? And then we also, I think, got some input that maybe in the historic district, we want to have a little bit closer review or something. But those are some of the things that I've been thinking about and got out of the public hearing.
So, Rich, would you be willing to be part of a subcommittee?
I would.
So to do that, it would be okay for two people to meet over Zoom?
Yeah, because you're not, it's not an official board meeting, you're not discussing.
But it is public.
It's public, but it is not discussing the.
Okay. Is there anybody else who would like to participate in that subcommittee? I mean, what I would hope the subcommittee would do is basically, what I took from what you were saying, Rich, is review what we, in terms of what we got as feedback from the public, combined with a lot of information that we gathered over the year, and kind of come back to the entire board with a, an outline that we can review about a more time-sensitive approach.
John, I'd sign up for that.
Well, is it legal to have two Riches on the same?
I think it is.
All right, so the two Riches, is there anybody else who wants a piece of that? All right, so the two Riches.
Tim?
Yeah, I would, so.
All right, two Riches and a Tim.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great. So do you want to figure out the time, I guess we should figure out the timing now so that we don't run into any unforeseen, oh, when can, when can the three of you do that?
I mean, I'm pretty flexible, as long as it's until about March and then the month of March, I'm pretty tied up.
No, we want to do this right away.
Yeah.
So David, you would have to be involved in this, so when would be a good time for you? David Robbins?
Yep, basically any day, but Thursday would be the, just because Thursdays, I'm in late for most Thursdays for meetings, so.
So this is Rich Brown, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday afternoons would be fine for me.
Let me get a calendar here.
So is this going to be Zoom or at the town office?
Well, I think we can do a hybrid if you want, it's like we're doing here, if you prefer.
Don't you need a quorum of the subcommittee if you need two here?
So you would, oh, yeah.
Oh, you'd need two here?
You need a quorum to constitute a meeting, you can't hold meetings virtually.
Well, that's going to be a problem because two of the people are not.
So for a subcommittee meeting?
Yeah, if you have any official meetings, they have to have a quorum present.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that makes about as much sense putting.
Yeah. Mengi, would that perhaps mean that we are, that we meet by Zoom and then we're no longer a meeting? Yeah.
Let's call it, let's call it illegal meeting.
I could be wrong, but I think the.
Well, we don't want to do that. Hold on, David Kahn.
I think the quorum requirement only applies if your, if the group is taking an action of some sort. I mean, the consequence of not having a quorum is that you don't, that any action taken by the group can be challenged, but here, they're not taking any action, right? It's just a working group, so.
So, so I'm going to throw.
I may be mistaken, we could ask Dina to.
You never know, but in fact, yeah, they, well, they, as a subcommittee, won't be taking any action that affects the planning board anyway. But the meeting laws are that if you have a meeting, a subcommittee meeting of a board, there needs to be a quorum physically present.
Okay, so let me, let me ask another question. If, if I came to the meeting for five minutes and then left, would that constitute a quorum?
No, because you're not.
I'm not here for the whole time.
Right, and I'm going to, I'm going to throw a monkey wrench in this too. I believe that the town committee handbook says that two members of a public body cannot get together to talk without, without it being a quorum.
Okay, well, we've already got three people who are interested, so if you had two here and one on Zoom, then it's totally fine.
Yeah, that's a public meeting.
Yeah.
Public meeting.
Because you have a quorum of the committee and Rich Mengi can stay safe.
But the problem, all right, well, let's, let's put this aside, so.
If you hold on just a second, I have finally found the.
Yeah.
I can't read it, but that's.
And the other thing is, is that if it's publicly noticed, you may want, I mean, somebody from the public may want to drift in and sit in and listen and participate, and that's what we want. We want people to take part in crafting this so that it reflects our community's values.
Well, that's, that's why it's public.
Yes.
Well, and in fact, that's one of the things I was going to say, that I was really energized by the participation we had at that public hearing. That really helped.
Really helped, particularly after a year where we had, we were flying blind.
Right, and so one of the challenges of bringing to this group is, how are we going to get that kind of participation again? How are we going to make?
Well, one thing that has already been raised is the questionnaire. I don't know how practical it is, but I think it could be practical. And that's another thing that we can think about tonight.
Yep.
Okay, so when David.
Yeah, unfortunately, the only thing it says about is a majority of the membership of a local land use board shall constitute the quorum necessary in order to transact business, as David, at any meeting of a local land use board.
So that doesn't change.
So it's a good question, I can send an email off to Laura tomorrow.
We've been, I mean, I've been dealing with this in Hanover, I work in Hanover, with lots of committees and we've been dealing with this and it's.
My understanding is that, yeah, it's pretty by the book.
So Vicki, just to be clear, so when you have a subcommittee, which isn't, may not be anywhere near a quorum, you all can get together, it's still warranted, the public can attend, but that's not been a problem?
It's, no, it, it, there's, it's got to be a quorum of the committee physically present and the rest of the committee can be remote and the public can join remotely, of course. So, yeah, that's how it's been. And we have a master plan advisory committee. No statutory authority, it's a subcommittee of the planning board and that has to have a quorum of the committee physically present in order to.
You mean a quorum of the subcommittee?
Yes, yep, yep. And we've got biodiversity trails, you know, it goes on and so it's been.
You may be right, but I thought the consequence of not having a quorum was that the committee couldn't take any action.
Yeah, but why would we want, well, they, well.
And this, this subcommittee isn't going to take any action.
If you can't have a quorum, you can't take action and the committee isn't going to be doing anything, but it's just the way to know and, you know, unfortunately, our governor is not recognizing this is hindering local, you know, business, municipal business.
Yes, I communicated to the governor's office and also to Russ Muirhead, our representative, and Russ Muirhead was really fantastic, he responded right away and he said, they're trying very hard to change things. And the NHMA, the municipal association, put the thing that Tim had brought up about emergencies, had that in their legislative bulletin and they sounded more hopeful than Russ Muirhead about the possibilities of a bill passing. The governor's office said, oh, we really sympathize, keep in touch.
Well, actually, the Amherst, chairman of the Amherst planning board.
I know, I sent, I sent that to her lawyer and she didn't agree.
No, no, I mean, it's, you know, the select board can call an emergency, but the planning board really isn't, so.
Yeah, her response stirred the wood.
No, 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 and then she continued, no.
Oh, okay, well, maybe that was clear.
No, it wasn't no, it was, anyway.
Doesn't make sense.
Okay, so we'll figure out, Dave, that.
Yeah, we'll figure this out and then see what we can do for getting, I'll work with the subcommittee and try to.
Okay, so one, one thing, oh, sorry, Rich.
And my status may change, I may be able to make a meeting up at the town office if, if it's more than likely that they're, that everybody will be vaccinated and wearing masks, so.
Yeah, I just want, I want to emphasize.
My status is being.
Rich, I would just like to emphasize to everybody who's concerned, I don't, I don't want anybody to do anything that they're not comfortable with because if something goes wrong, it's just not fair to those who have legitimate concerns to be pressured into putting themselves at risk. But I appreciate your, your willingness.
Sure.
So getting back to how to do this without it dragging out for too long, one of the things I liked about the, not, we're not the same size town or the same conditions as Keene, but I liked their structure because it was, I mean, I have it here, printed it out. It's really pretty concise, they just go by size and everything is very clearly spelled out. So whether we use their particular template or not, I like the idea of figuring out how we're going to approach it and just keeping it simple. They basically have three subdivisions that they break into, small, medium, and large. Small and medium didn't seem to have that much of a difference. And I just, I like that approach, I think it's, it's very manageable, it's easy to understand, everything's defined very clearly, we got some good feedback, I think we can incorporate that. So that's, you know, that's my first impression of that a way to go.
Yeah.
Vicki, did you have thoughts?
Not more than what anybody else has said, except that I feel like we really don't need to work with the regional planning commission. I think that we have access to examples and that the feedback we received was really instructive. I also feel like a survey just is going down a different path and it's going to cost time and money and.
It will cost time.
And I think it's going to be a whole lot more, we'll get much better response if we have a draft. If we wanted to spend money mailing, we mail that thing out and get people's responses instead of like asking people about this or that.
That's a good point.
So I feel like people respond much more when there's something on the table that they can really read and envision. So I'd be kind of not in favor of doing a survey, but really in favor of working on a draft that we share broadly and have a lot of time to share.
I think it's a good point because that's when we got people to actually come in and the feedback was good because they had something to look at and tell us what they didn't like and what they liked.
So John, we have, we have money in the budget for a mailing?
No.
Okay.
Well, you know.
We can, we can always ask the select board.
We always find a way, so.
Because it's like four or $500, right, or something like that?
It's a few hundred, yeah, yeah.
So how does everybody feel about, I like Vicki's suggestion that for efficiency's sake, we put something together that's a draft and we do it, you know, soon, get it out there so that people have something to react to as opposed to abstract ideas and then, you know, if we mail it or however we do it, and we take it from there.
So John, you mean do a proposed amendment and then mail that out?
Just a draft, yeah, we could mail it out.
Yeah.
So, is town meeting going to proceed in March as usual or?
I think so, we're thinking about doing a little town meeting, we were just talking about this today. So like we're meeting, thinking about doing a little town meeting digitally like we did last year, but the regular town meeting, I think, we don't, council advises us that we don't have a lot of flexibility, so I think we're just going to do it at the school as we know it.
Okay, okay, okay.
All that stuff is set by statute and without an emergency order.
Right, right, okay, good, good.
And David, anything you would like to tell us, you know, about the solar thing or any ideas about approaching it?
I'm brand new to this.
Yeah, I, just in case you had, I understand totally, but, you know, in case you had, don't want to block you out there.
Okay.
So anytime you, if something, you let us know. All right, so folks, we need to, so now we got to do it. So let me just take a break, we have public here and give the public a chance to speak. So any public?
I've got some comments, but would you like to go first?
Last I heard from Patty Jenks, you guys are short a seat. Do you have someone who's going to run? Is David Kahn going to fill a spot?
I was going to, I'm running.
So there's no, there's no open spots then if you're, you guys are good.
Well, I don't know, what's, what's everybody's stat, who's running? Vicki's running, Eric, are you running?
Eric, can you done?
Yeah, I am.
And you ran.
I will be running, yeah.
Yeah, so there's, there's three people running for two seats.
Okay, good, that's what I wanted to know, thanks.
Sure.
Good.
I don't do it, I can't, I don't recognize it.
John Biglow, I took Kelsey South across the street.
Sure, I remember you, yeah, please keep your mask on if you would. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so I actually have a couple of things to say. So first, I just want to say that I think you guys get a lot of good things coming out of your proposed amendment that is on hold for now, I guess. And, you know, one of those is, I think the treatment of rooftop solar is pretty straightforward. It seems like you're not going to impose any limitations there, which I think is a good thing. On the ground mounted side, I like the way that you handled the dimensional measurements using the drip line and the 70% rule for the tracking systems, I think that's fine. You know, regulating ground mounted systems as structures, I think, makes sense or at least it's hard, hard to argue with. And as I understand it, you know, the, the, basically lot coverage limitations on structures means that you're only looking at a maximum of two-thirds of an acre per lot, is that accurate? I think I heard that last time.
It's, 26,000 feet, square feet is going to be absolute maximum lot coverage for any lot in.
For any structure.
Yeah, for any structure, for all structures, I should say. So if you already have structures on the lot, then you subtract those and that will give you your.
And Mark, just to, there's one other factor in that, it's, it's 2% of the lot.
Depends on the district.
Depends on the district, yes, so, but, I mean, if it's going to be large, it's going to be in the rural district. And so the 26,000 max is, you need a certain sized parcel.
You'd need a big lot.
You need a big lot because you can only cover 2% of it.
2%.
Yeah. Well, that, that does vary, yeah.
Okay, but I guess my point is though that, like, that rule is probably unlikely to change, right? And that's kind of enshrined in the code presumably.
You mean the 26,000?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I think some of you, the board can look at that and say, you know, I think you would need to look at, you know, what are the sizes of, you know, some of the installations around the area and make that determination if that.
Yeah, so I, I think one of the big conversations we're going to have to have with the town is under, and that's, you never know, but I would imagine would be, people would have a lot of strong opinions about, are the large size, you know, the, the really big arrays, you know, in that range or potentially larger? That's, like, if we got feedback from, from the town that said, go for it, you know, 10 acres, 20, we don't care, I don't think that'll happen, but you never know. Then I think we'd have to look at that as it applies to solar. And conversely, if people were really upset with, with that, we'd have to take that into.
Yeah, so I guess what I was going to say is, you know, with, with that 26,000 square feet limit in there and all these, all these other things, you know, the way you're measuring drip line and everything, it seems like those things in combination are going to put kind of a natural cap on system size anyway. And so maybe what this all boils down to is your dimensional stuff is, you know, maybe fine as it is and really the issues that are probably going to be most contentious are those relating to, you know, the various business models that one might use to support these systems and whether you consider those to be commercial or non-commercial. And I guess along those lines, if you think about ground mounted systems and what the possibilities are, it seems like there are really only maybe four different options that you might need to consider. One being, you know, a ground mounted system where the owner is, has contracted with the utility or some other power marketer and is just selling the output, so it's kind of a purely for-profit model. So that's one.
So I just want to be clear about, so somebody's got this array on their property and you're saying for profit, you mean they're just selling it back to the?
Yeah, they're not using the power on site, they.
Oh, they're not using. Oh, they're not using it on site?
They've hooked into the grid and they have a contract with the utility.
Okay.
So the second model would be perhaps also considered a commercial model where you have, you know, a, a business in town who puts up a sizable ground mounted array for their own use? So that would be kind of a commercial self-consumption model?
Well, the, the way we had it in, in the fir-, what we didn't get done was that there was not gonna be a distinction
Yeah.
between residential and business. It was principal use. So
Yep.
a business that was using it for themselves
That would be okay, right?
That would be okay.
Yeah. So I think that's good. And then, you know, just kind of stepping down maybe in size or in commercialness, the, the next one, the third one, I think would be what I'll call a group net metered system. So this is one that's either, you know, a, a resident could put one up or a business or the, the town itself could potentially put one up. But that's a, that's a system where some of the power is used on site, but a lot of it goes to your neighbors through a, you know, a group net metering arrangement. And then the fourth one is just a resident putting a ground mounted system in for their own self-consumption. And I'm not sure that there are really any other business models that you need to think about. And, you know, like you said, John, the commercial self-consumption model already seems to be allowed with, with what, what you guys have come up with. The residential self-consumption already seems to be allowed. So that leaves kind of the group net metering and the commercial power sales contract. And group net metering is something that's defined by the legislature, so I'm not sure if, maybe you could just have a provision in the, in the, in the code that says if the system is group net metered and all group members are Lime residents, then it's allowed. It's not considered to be commercial in that case. So I, you know, just throwing that out there as an idea that for, for your consideration.
So basically lift the language and then make those provisions.
Yeah, and, and it sort of seems like, you know, if you take this approach and just kind of refer to what the legislature has already done with group net metering and you've got your existing dimensional controls in place already, then you almost don't need to think about the size issue all that much. You don't need to think about hard caps or, you know, large, medium, small, that kind of thing. So it's, it's kind of a, maybe a different way to go than, than it sounds like what Keane has done, but I think it's, it's potentially worth considering.
Well, it's, yeah, I mean, it's interesting because it built, it kind of builds on how we started the thing. And, and Rich Mengey, you, you may, you may remember this better than I do with the Keane thing. One of the things I thought was interesting about the Keane thing with size is I, I don't think that they even mentioned the use. And maybe wrong, but I thought it, it, what, some of the things that came up in the, in the hearing, people seemed to be saying, well, we're defining it by use, but that, that ran into a whole bunch of, it's kind of opened a can of worms. And it, and if we, and it kept on coming up, well, what we're really concerned about is the larger size arrays and how do we make them safe, have abandonment things set up? So the thing that, one of the things that appealed to me about the Keane thing was that it circumvented all of these subdivisions of abuses and, and it might get around that. But now that I'm listening to your ideas, that sounds good too. Anybody, please, other people? Vicky?
Well, I, I guess I am more supportive of this, the kind of size thing. To be regulating it like other structures, except in the case where we have a commercial solar. And in that case, we may want to say, oh, solar installations that are commercial solar installations can be bigger than twenty-six thousand square feet.
If the town supports it, yeah.
And, and, you know, that, that's its own category and that would be like the only structural, you know, development that could exceed, that could exceed the, the, the limits that we put on the structures. I get a little concerned when we start saying, oh, the group net metering is fine if it only serves people in Lime. Because that is a enforcement thing that, so what if the neighbor across the boundary in Hanover actually could use it or wants to buy in? You know, is that a, should that be a special exception? I mean,
Well, that, that's what, that's what appealed to me about the size thing is, is we don't even have to address that.
I'd like to stay away from that kind of stuff. That once we say, oh, this thing is fine, then it just, you know, runs along.
Then if people are group net metering under the size
Right. You don't have to worry.
Then we don't even have to care.
Right.
And David doesn't have to get involved in that.
Because it should just get built and, and function and we don't have to keep checking in on it.
Right.
That's, that's what I am, am support, very supportive of.
Yeah, I think I, my impression was that everybody on the board wants to enable group net metering.
Vicky, how, how are you defining commercial? Is that only if it's
Well, say
group net metering or
No, say
or it's sold out, yeah?
I, I, it, it's the principal use of the lot. That's a, you know, it's the only use there. It's a commercial array.
So it's not being used by any built, by any house there or any business there?
It is the, the principal use. And
And that's how we're defining commercial, okay.
Well, I don't, no, we're not. I mean, that's, that's, it's like some idea that I have in my mind about, well, in that case, maybe we allow it to be bigger than the other things. I mean,
Right.
certainly the skiway has many, you know, relaxations in their district. And I don't know, maybe for the specific use because it's addressing something that means a lot to our planet, we would allow that to happen.
Right.
That it be bigger than other structures.
Right, so if someone's, someone has a, a large array and they're, and they're just selling it back to the power company, then that's not commercial necessarily.
Well, is that somebody has the array on their same lot as their residence? Is that what you're thinking about?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Well, if, then in that case, I believe that it should be, you know, the regulated like, you know, the swimming pool, the tennis court, and the garage. It's, you know, it's accessory to the residential use and has to follow that. But it doesn't matter where the power goes. It just has to structurally
Right.
conform with what we have in our regulations. But I'm thinking that, you know, a principal use of, you know, solar array being a commercial principal use that we might wanna consider more than twenty-six thousand square feet or two percent, you know, whatever's bigger, find another number that we would feel comfortable with.
Right, right.
I mean, honestly, I don't know how many there are gonna be here in Lime anyway.
You mean the large commercial?
The large arrays. I mean, you need to have three face power. You know, it's, it's a big deal.
It's a lot of money.
It's, it's, well, it's, it's a big project. If you go up to see what they've built in Hanover, you know, by their water treatment plant, I mean, you know, it's big and it's also industrial and it makes you think that, you know, it needs to be properly sited. But, you know, all told, it's a better thing than a coal-fired power plant or
Right.
another dam on the Connecticut River. You know, so, you know, it's like an essential service. We need to have it, have power production somewhere.
Right. So all, that array in Hanover, is that group net metering?
No, this is just a, like a commercial generator. It's run, you know, the town and college. Actually, no, it's, it's, it's not even that. It's, it's, there's a, there's a private investor that put it in. And it's on land that's at the Truscott Company land that's co-owned by the college in town.
So it's, it's, it's not a town owned?
It goes back in
No, it's a town-sponsored project.
And it goes back into the grid? It just goes into the grid?
It produces power and, and it, it was, you know, it, it was as big as they can get and the town's looking for more space to put other large solar arrays.
So this was not town-owned property?
It's co-owned.
Co-owned. So who gets the benefit aside from, you know, obviously everybody's benefiting because there's, there's more energy production, but is there, who's economic, who's?
Well, there's a, you know, I'm sure that the town gets like the credit for the power.
Yeah.
And I think the college does as well because it's a joint project. But it's a, you know, somebody else who came in and
So it's a public-private partnership?
Yes, it is. Yes.
So, so just looking again quickly at, at the, the Keane structure, the only, the only distinction, they don't address, and I don't see anything looking quickly that where they're addressing use. The, the, the size is strictly a question of how much space the solar footprint is, it takes up. So, you know, that's
So it could be a principal use as well?
It could be a principal use. It, it really doesn't address it at all.
And what is large? I, I just
Large, um, large, I just saw it. Bear with me.
It's the, up to five acres.
Yeah, up to five acres and, and the small is up to two thousand square feet. Which is, you know, that's a good chunk for small scale.
You know, the, the, this is Rich. The, the two thousand square feet I figured is, you know, using three hundred and fifty watt panels, which is actually small at this point or, or average to small, you know, that would generate forty kilowatts of power. So you know, that's, that's several households' worth of power for a small system.
That, that's, it's very generous for a small system.
Yeah, and, and I, I think I'm fine with, with that. You know, I mean, I, I think what we're really, or, or, what I'm more interested in seeing is, you know, when you start to get into larger installations, we just wanna have some review procedures to, to go in place so that there can be public input and, you know, safety and aesthetic concerns can be addressed as, as well as, you know, other criteria. But you know, I think hopefully we can come up with, you know, a number or a feeling of what, what should people be allowed to have on their site with a middle, minimal amount of review. And then beyond that, then, then you do get into review and, you know, beyond that, I mean, you're talking about a, a very expensive project anyways, so I think at that point, it warrants having review.
Yeah, I, I don't think, I, I would feel really irresponsible not having oversight over a large system.
One thing I would just ask the board to also just list review in this is the conservation districts and see if there is, because that typically is going to be the, the biggest issue with siting. Just knowing that the geography, the town, ag soils are going to come up over and over again and
Well, with it, so with ag soils, that you can use up to twenty-five percent?
Right, and that, I, I'll just ask the board to review this as part of the
In, in that context?
In that, and then see if this is reasonable or if they feel that there's need to change that. It's just an additional item I think should be at least looked at.
Right. You know, one of the thing, I, I think it might have been in the thing, you, you sent something at the last second, right?
Diving forward it, it
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
You sent it to David and I got, I got a copy CC to me. And I looked at, at a link and they had a section on, which I, I thought was very interesting about a solar array, large solar arrays on, on ag soils. And how you can make it work so that it's a, a, you know, a, a joint benefit as a solar array and to the ag soils. And, and the implication was that, you know, there are ways of what it, in which it would not be such a great thing for the ag soils, but this was pointing out how you could really make it more of a win-win. So that might be something to think about in that context.
I'll, I'll get that link out to
Well, it was the last, it was the last minute. I don't think people would have been able to
I had no chance to look at it prior.
I actually didn't have a chance either, so thank you for
Yeah, I, I looked at it very quickly, but that was the, one thing that jumped out.
I know in the Hanover case, they had a lot of wet soils and so they were able to use helical peer systems so as to minimize the disturbance in the wetlands. You know, so there are ways to do it. And certainly the larger arrays you get into ultra-centern limits with this, you know, so you need state review for, for the bigger projects as did that one.
Actually, Vicky, I was letting have a deep talk, but I like your idea about as a structure, but if it's commercial that maybe it could be either larger than twenty-six thousand square feet or we could say, no, this is a commercial installation. And I did a quick number, I think I did it right, if I, a ten acre lot, I could get about eight thousand square feet of lot coverage on the two percent. But maybe I wanted to have fifteen thousand square feet because I was gonna make a lot of power. Maybe the way to keep our finger on the pulse of those projects is to say, this is bigger than the two percent that you're allowed. Good, you're making power. You're making electricity. This is a good thing. We have these rules. We, we want you to observe. So they, it leaves the little local installations for your home, accessory use and all. But whether it's primary or, or an accessory use, if you're gonna wanna cover more with solar panels, these are the rules. And I think that fits really nicely and we don't have to get involved in. So who's using this power? Are they from Orford? You know?
Yeah, I think we, we already were saying we'd like to avoid that.
Yeah, so, I mean, that, that's a nice way to do it.
Alright, so I don't know, you know, shall we just have, once we can figure out how they can do it, have the subcommittee meet and report to the, report back to the
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
So let's have, that's, it's Rich, Rich, and Tim. And we have to figure out how we can enable that.
Yep, I'm gonna
Okay.
Send an email to Laura and just
Okay, but so if Laura comes back and says that you can't do it because we're not gonna have a quorum here.
Well, we don't need to be a quorum. We're, we're gonna
No, but we may not have a quorum. Tim and, and Rich Mengey are, are remote. And, and you know, you guys have always been remote. You never open up to me, you know?
Yeah.
No, anyway, you know, so they're, they're remote and I don't think it's fair to pressure them to
No, no, no.
I, I, that's wrong. So I think we need to, what I would say is if, if it isn't impossible, if it isn't possible, I will regretfully participate if necessary, though I would really like not to.
John, I would, I would just say that, you know, I, as Rich was saying, I, I probably won't have a problem if it's just us, you know, meeting in the room there. It's just the three of us.
It's gonna be a public meeting and, and, and
What?
Public is, you know, is, is encouraged to show up.
Right, yeah.
Eric has a question, John.
Eric?
So getting back to this idea of oversight, I mean, we, we, we talked about this earlier, I mean, last year. If anything were the solar installation is, is the primary use, then we have site plan review, right? So that's, that's easy to do.
What, what?
Right?
Site?
Site plan because it's a commercial use. It's a, it's a commercial
Right, right, okay, yeah.
Right, so this, 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 the sticking point in how we got into this whole thing last time with the, 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 for use on a lot and whatnot was, was because if, if the primary for use on a lot and whatnot was, was because if, if the primary use was residential, single family, then we can't do site plan. So, so those are those sort of, you know, medium sized systems that may be on a lot with a house where, where we can't get the site plan review triggered. So the question to me is how do we, if we wanna have oversight over those, how do we do it?
Well, uh.
Yeah.
Right, so if I've got 20 acres over here, I can put a, I can put a big system on it, right?
You know, how are we gonna, how are we gonna regulate that if we wanna regulate that?
So, I mean, that's one of my questions about keen is they don't address use, they just address size.
Right.
And, and then they, they, they have, they're not talking about site plan review per se. They're saying, uh, conditional use permit.
Right, which is equivalent to a special exception.
Which is equivalent?
Yeah.
Uh, and, and then they.
Zoning board or conditional use.
Well, then they have a conditional use of the planning board.
I, I think what they're doing is they're avoiding the site plan review by doing conditional use.
Right.
Instead of saying, um, you know, site plan review, there's a specific item you can review. In this case, they're saying, no, we're gonna do conditional use and.
And that can surround the, the limitations of site plan review. And, uh.
The site plan review.
That sounds like.
Does, 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 do, do conditional use permits give us that oversight? I mean, I, I just had a own of about.
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's essentially, um, it's, yeah, like Vicky says, it's a special. The way they wrote this is, um, for the, at least for the large ones, um, you've gotta get a conditional use permit from the planning board and then the planning board has standards that have to be met. And they have, uh, um, basically the wiggle room based on the standards, to make sure that the large ones are, uh, properly done.
So you would, you would come up with a new, these conditional use standards for solar.
For solar.
That the planning board would adopt and when somebody came in and said, I wanna build this, the board would say, okay, here's our standards and.
Yep.
So they have, they have review criteria.
Or you send it to the zoning board as special exception.
Well, then, but we'd still have to provide them with.
Right, standards. Yeah, so it, you know, yes, 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 yes. Yep.
But, but I think you're, you're right, Eric, that, that, that's a good way to.
Yes, trigger the, yeah, by size.
By size, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And does, does the conditional use permit, I mean, part of what we wanna do is have, you know, have the neighbors notice so they can come in and say, I look over that field every day, blah, 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 whatever.
Yep.
Is that part of the conditional use permit?
The, the, the planning, the planning board in writing the amendment would set the review criteria.
And then you would have to hold a hearing for the review and that hearing would have to be noted.
So yes, they'd have an opportunity to come in, but depending upon the criteria, I, I, it, their input would be, um, import, uh, effective to a varying degree. You know, if, if the, if the, like in some of these things, the criteria is, uh, must be cited, you know, so as to minimize impact on neighbors, if that's in there, that's gonna carry a lot of weight. If it's not in there, um, comments from neighbors would carry less weight.
Well, okay, but when you say impact on neighbors, we have to be so much more specific.
I know.
We're just throwing out a generalization.
I'm not suggesting that. I'm saying that it's, these are, these are two extremes of writing the, the criteria.
Okay, so I, I wonder, you know, what we need to do is take a really careful look at our special exceptions and say, is there anything more than that that we would want to impose on a solar?
Or would we, or would we look at our site plan review criteria or both? You know, the site plan re.
Well, yeah, take a look because I, I wonder about conditional uses. We don't have those, so.
Well, we do actually on senior housing because the lawyer told us to, to do that.
Yeah, well, that's, you know, different, but I, the, the kind of, you know, well, I would not want to put unnecessary burdens on a solar project that was getting reviewed that you could build a barn that would, you know, violate those things. So it shouldn't be any different than another structure.
Okay, so you wanna keep it consistent with structural.
Right, with other structures. So why would we single that?
I, I think, because we've gotta decide whether we're gonna, we're, are we gonna go by size? Are we gonna go by use or are we gonna do a hybrid?
Well, I think like the size triggers maybe special exception review.
A certain size.
Yeah, and it could be on Eric's residential lot or it could be a commercial.
And so, and so outside of that, it would, you're saying, so you're, you'd make a distinction and that's where the distinction.
Well, maybe just based on the size, no matter where you put it, on a residential lot or a commercial. And, and, you know, I wonder if, you know, we just take a look at our special exception stuff and we shouldn't have to reinvent the wheel. We shouldn't be kind of penalizing a solar installation, treating it much differently than another structure. Um, and, and then maybe there's one thing that we need to say. I mean, the three-phase power lines are not great, um.
Yeah, I think.
They don't go underground.
I think there are things that are gonna be different.
And, um, so, you know, that, that, it, it, you know, and that's off-site, most, for the, you know, most of that's off-site. And so, um, that's the kind of change that I personally might find objectionable. You know, I don't wanna lose the tree canopy. I don't want a bigger, you know, utility ride of white hut, that kind of thing. And that's not covered by, you know, our site thing, so.
I, 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 I think it's, you know.
And that's, that's what neighbors are gonna complain about.
It's close to inevitable with a really large, uh, array that just the criteria in, in special exceptions is gonna.
Well, it's very limiting actually to where you can cite it, to where you have.
Well, we wanna, maybe we, we wanna.
Three phases, but.
Uh, make some things easier than the special exceptions, some things, you know, more.
Yeah, maybe, but anyway, that's something that the committee needs to look at.
All right, the committee, uh, you've gotten your marching orders. I think the thing we need to do is, is let's not spin our wheels tonight.
Right, right.
The committee needs to meet, report back, so we, um, let's pick a date. It was Monday, Tuesday, what was it, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday?
Afternoons are generally available.
So what are the next, I don't even know, yeah, next Monday, Tuesday or Wednesday?
It's the.
Yeah, the, the 31st, the first and the second.
I don't have my calendar, so I, I hope not to be involved. So why don't you? Yeah.
And I'll, I'll, I'll just send an email to Laura tonight before I go home and then we should have an answer by tomorrow.
So why don't you three guys, um, pick your, pick your time and we'll figure it out from there.
Maybe, maybe.
So that's, that's next, Monday, Tuesday or Wednesday?
Yep.
Yeah, I think any, any day is okay for me.
Well, hold it, does that give us enough time to notice it or?
Actually, no, well, I hadn't thought about that.
Right, yeah, yeah, so.
So let's look at the seventh, uh, eighth and ninth. And that'll lead right up to the, the first planning board meeting in February that week.
Okay.
Unless we were gonna do a continuation of this meeting to a time and date certain that you guys would figure out tonight and it would be canceled if it would be illegal or, you know, or whatever you're, you're asking, because we could do that. It would be continuation with our.
And while, while, while you guys are cogitating, uh, Mark, I just, I wanted to see if you had anything else you wanted to add?
Not necessarily. I mean, I guess it sounds like you're moving back towards the size issue and, um, you know, maybe that's fine. But I think like the last time we like had all kinds of trouble trying to figure out what sizes makes sense. And so I, I don't know, like, how are you gonna solve that issue, I guess?
That's, that's a magic question. I think maybe the exercise of going through it, um, will answer that question.
I think it's a good idea to find where there are larger installations and, and for people just to on their own go visit. Most of them, you know, are visible from roads and, and go see.
Well, there's one, I've seen one in Fairleigh.
The two in Fairleigh.
I, I, I think I've just seen one.
You, you, if you come down the interstate just before the, um, Fairleigh off-ramp, you know, on the northbound lane, if you look to the east.
Oh, so, oh, I'm driving north.
Yep.
And I see it on the right.
Yes.
Okay.
You'll see.
It's a big one.
Yep, and then the second one, if you're coming up Route 5, again, heading north. Uh, basically it's across from Lita's and the, uh.
So that's closer in the town.
Yes, and it's, again, to the east between, uh, Route 5 and the river. It's just south of, uh, there, there used to be a propane dealer, so they, they still have the facility there.
Right.
Right before Lou Fogg's lumberyard, um, out and back.
And do you have any idea how big they are?
I have no idea how big they are.
Could you get that information from the Fairleigh town office?
They're come less than an acre, right?
Okay, that'd be great. So we'll find out what, you know, and so not only the production, but the physical size is I guess more of our, our interest here to see if.
Yeah, I would guess they're less than an acre.
And so when they're permitted in Vermont, I mean, something that's really big would have an Act 250 permit or is that exempt?
I really don't know. I did not really.
Did you ask her that? And then, and then how do they finesse the ag soil thing? Cause those are ag soils.
Yeah, I don't know if Fairleigh has.
No, it's a state thing. So if you're under Act 250, how do they finesse the ag soil thing?
And that they definitely, cause one of them is in a, it was an active hay field.
Right, yeah, yeah, and, and it looked to me like it was, there wasn't.
And actually the, the, the one on the other side is also, that was all active fields also.
And one other thing that I really care a lot about is that the, um, there's a horrible, uh, documentary that I saw about basically, you know, so, solar array graveyards where you have, you know, decommissioned solar panels, acres of them out there and they're just sitting there rotting essentially.
Why would that be? Do they have digs?
They're abandoned.
It was out, it was out in the desert. I don't really know. And it was, it was, it was something that came out birthday like two years ago. And is there was like no provision for removal.
Right.
And I feel like for these larger installations that, um, they should be removed and recycled in appropriate way.
Yeah, I mean abandonment issues a big deal.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, you know, when I bought my house, I had two, uh, of those dishes. It's like, you gotta get rid of them and be on the buying the property. It's not like dishes, it's each thing, same two of them, um, on, on, you know, an acre wide.
Stereo.
I guess, but you know, and neither of them worked, so.
Yeah, yeah, that.
So it's just like they need to go away.
We, yeah, we don't, we don't wanna enable that.
Yeah, and so I think but for a commercial thing that, um, you know, with telecommunications towers, there's usually a provision for like how you get, you know, those get, you know, de-commissioned and removed from the site. So they're not a hazard and likewise these should have a plan.
Yeah, so I, I hope all, all three of you on the subcommittee are, are taking copious notes about these, these issues.
Right.
And we'll, we'll address them.
So John, do we wanna do this on February 7th?
Um, that's, that's, that's up to you.
Yeah, we should decide maybe now.
What, what day of the week is that?
Monday, Monday.
Okay, Monday, February 7th?
Hey, Mark, are you able to go to, to attend a meeting like that in the afternoon?
Um, potentially, yeah.
Yeah.
What time, what time would you guys meet? Or David Robbins, what, what do you think would be a good time?
Um, mid-afternoon, I'm here until four. And so I'd have to participate if you're gonna do it on Zoom because I have to.
So, uh, what would you prefer as a time?
Any, any time there is fine for me.
Two o'clock?
Yeah.
Two o'clock, cause I work for, for Rich Man.
Two o'clock first, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So yeah, so I don't, I don't think we need to extend this. This is David Khan's first meeting. He's suffering enough. So, uh, the sub, subcommittee, subcommittee, you are, you are now, uh, you have a.
Duly constituted.
Yeah, duly constituted or unduly constituted, we'll find out. And I agree, let's, let's kick this thing, uh, in the pants and really get it, get it done well and quickly, cause there are certainly other issues, uh, that, that we, we need to.
Yeah, well, I, my thought was, geez, you know, if we had a viable draft at town meeting, we could just make a, a bunch of copies and have people take them out and then we'd have a meeting afterward.
That's a great idea. So that's March. We have, we have, uh, three more meetings before that at least. So let's set that as our goal. We wanna have something to.
Yeah, and then, and then we have a meeting after town meeting, after everyone's picked one up and taken it home. And, you know, say, okay, well, we want you to give us feedback and you can send emails to David or you can, you know, come on by Zoom or hopefully.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so that.
I mean, I, I think that's potentially a good idea, but you won't get that many people. I mean, how many people come to town meeting? 100, 120 people?
Does it?
That's better than nobody.
It's a way to get out and to show that we really want people to understand what we're doing and, uh, and, and then, you know, the direction from that many people could really help us get a better product for when we go to a public hearing.
Yeah, for example, you know, we, I think we all felt like the, the hearing we had was very helpful. I don't know, how, what do we have? We had under 10, maybe five or six people.
Yep.
Right.
So if we, if we can get 10 or 20, that would be enormous.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it would save money. It would save a lot of money.
So I guess there's also one thing we have to, like, we can't host for a potential zoning amendment because if we do that, then the more restrictive of the amendment and what we have now would apply until we would actually take it up at town meeting. So we're really stuck with not being able to have public hearings until later because I assume there are gonna be a bunch of projects that are gonna get done this summer that we don't wanna have any review over because, you know, people are having heartache about that. So, yeah, so we.
Well, I see you can still have a, a public meeting.
We have to have a big public meeting and.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, it doesn't have to be a formal hearing.
No, no, but we will have to have a formal hearing and at that point, then those, the more restrictive of like your current or what's proposed applies and we don't wanna start restricting people.
Well, anything that we come up with this year is gonna have to pass next year, so wouldn't apply until a year from March.
No, it applies as of the date of posting.
Yeah, when you post the public hearing, then you are now.
Really? Even though it's not voted over with a tab?
Even though it's not passed?
Yep.
Yes.
Why?
Because it, it basically, um, the, the law is set up so that, um, you can't try to sneak projects in, um, underneath.
But that's like sneaking it in, sneaking in a law that's not a law.
Well, no, it, that's why I'm saying we shouldn't have any formal public hearing until we get much closer.
Okay, so we're not gonna have any formal public hearing, so we avoid the whole.
Yes, we have very formal, and that's.
But we can have, we can have, we can have a forum.
Yes, yes, many forums or, or two big ones and.
That's not a problem.
It's the official public hearing to present it as a, a zoning amendment.
Cause I, you know, that, a public hearing would get the people out, but I don't want it to start, you know.
That, I didn't know that and I'm glad to know it, but that's ridiculous. All right, I, I.
Luckily it's not.
I'd like to, um, end this, uh, this gathering if, unless anybody objects.
Do we wanna do the minutes?
Minutes?
Oh, if we have to.
Let me grab my copies off the fridge or I'll be right back. I've gone here, David. I just wanted to talk to me, clock, or predict.
Uh, I've got my phone, so I got him on the phone.
I don't have my copies, but I, I didn't see anything in there. I had one.
One typo.
There you go.
Two times.
And, and Mark, thanks a lot for coming.
Yeah, you bet. Thank you.
And David, thank you for, for.
Yeah, it's hard to be so useless on this.
No, 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 you're, you're.
No, your presence is really important.
At least you can see how we fumble along.
Yeah.
You don't have to say it.
Well, it's with good intention.
Yes.
Okay, let's get these minutes done. Uh, you have a typo.
I have a typo. Uh, so it, I, the night of December, I had no comments, so.
Yep, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of December 9th.
Second by Rich Brown. Uh, all those in. Uh, all those in favor of adopting, of that motion, uh, say aye. And, and we have to do, do we have to do by, by roll call? Okay, anyway, say aye.
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 Is, is that, uh, those guys are okay, okay?
Am I voting or not?
No, no, you've been, you have been decommissioned voluntarily, voluntarily, by the way.
Designate, but designate, yeah.
Okay, so then what's the next date?
On the sixth, the only comment I had is Sarah Shipton has an H in her name, S A R E H. That's it.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion on that one. Is there a sec, uh, to adopt as amended by Rich Brown, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Again.
Okay, uh, who wants to?
I heard Vicky.
Vicky, I'm sorry, Tim, Vicky got it, it's gonna go on her, it's gonna go on her stat sheet, you know, you gotta be quicker.
And on her resume?
Yeah, yeah. All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And I'm gonna abstain because I wasn't here.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'm a, I'm just abstaining from all of them.
We're, we're assuming, yeah, we'll, we'll assume a, a abstentions from, from David Kahn. Okay, so, uh, is it okay with everybody if we get out of here?
Yep.
All right, those of you at home, what's that?
John?
Yeah?
Maybe while we're still here, I just wanna, I assume that Rich is gonna come on the seventh to the town office. I think I could probably come to the town office on the seventh.
Okay, well, that would...
Rich, Rich, Mandy, you wanna stay home or do you wanna come too?
No, I, I think I can come to the office.
All right.